Good evening, everybody. Calling to order regular city council meeting for the City of Hayden. It is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. It is approximately 5:02 PM. May we have a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Everybody join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, just to clarify on the agenda, we are concluded with item 9A, correct? In the special meeting, there's no further discussion on that tonight?
We have not dealt with 9A.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right, are there any additions or corrections? I don't think there are any. We'll roll right into our first line item, which is a proclamation of Frontline Worker Appreciation Month. It's specifically aimed at the essential services that ensure the safety, health, and education of our residents. Now therefore, I, Allen Davis, Mayor of Hayden, City of Hayden, Cootney County, Idaho, do proclaim the month of May 2025 as Frontline Worker Appreciation Month in the City of Hayden, and encourage all residents of the City of Hayden to join in and recognize and honor the heroic contributions of our healthcare workers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, EMS personnel, and teachers. And I encourage our citizens to show their support for these frontline workers that provide so much for our city through specific acts of generosity or kindness. As an example, I don't know a teacher that wouldn't appreciate a donation for one of the many items they personally purchased to ensure a positive, healthy learning environment for our children. And with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar, which consists of approval of the April 22nd, 2025 city meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, approval of April 25th, 2025, special city council meeting minutes, approval of April 30th, 2025, special city council meeting minutes, approval of agreement with Cities Digital Incorporated for Leisure Fish Support Services, approval of 2025 Idaho Granite Works Paper Agreement for Memorial Day, approval of 2025 Funflicks Outdoor Movies Screen Rental Agreements, approval of David Evans and Associates Engineering Services Agreement for Survey, approval of the Independent Contractors Agreement with RC Worst, approval of request to purchase new pay kiosk for Honeysuckle Beach, approval of the Independent Contractor Agreement with American Fence Company for H1 Lift Station, approval of Independent Contractor Agreement with American Fence Company for Emerald Oaks Lift Station, approval of Independent Contractor Agreement with the American Fence Company for Dakota Lift Station, approval of Professional Services Agreement with Keller Associates, approval of BS and A E Plan Soft Integration Supplemental Contract Approval, ratification of the April 2025 payroll and bills for payment. Any questions on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have a few, and I was not able to get in to ask some of these questions. So please bear with me. They're just, they're easy questions, if I think, to answer. Regarding the request to purchase pay kiosk, does that kiosk include the programming of it? Because I know it's very specific what we charge, and do we have to program it?
I don't know that I, I think if we have to program it, it's pretty easy because we deal with it all the time, but I can't answer that question.
Okay, I just was curious as to whether we, we have someone that knows how to do that, apparently. Okay, thank you. The next question I have goes to, it's regarding the invoice register for the City of Hayden, and I'm looking at page seven, which is the prosecution legal fees to the City of Post Falls for $11,600. Do we have any reports that we get from the, from Post Falls that shows how many cases they're prosecuting and how many convictions they get or fines? Do we get those reports?
I've asked for more detailed reports on their funding side of things, but they do give us quarterly reports, and I've had to remind them a couple of times for those. So I did get them the last quarter late, and I used it as part of my conversation with you guys over the last budget cycle, budget workshop. So I can certainly bring those forward, though.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see those if possible. And then last question, it has to do with the right of ways that we're acquiring at the intersection of Honeysuckle and Ramsey, where, in respect to the posed roundabout. I noticed that we have two, David Evans Association, associates are doing surveying, and one of the surveys with Leisure Park are, are corner pins with rebar that seem to be permanent survey pins, which I understand since we're acquiring that property, that makes sense that we would want permanent ones. Whereas the northeast property, we're only putting state, asking for wooden plates to be put in. And am I, and am I, I'm just assuming that we're trying to show the owners of the property basically what will be done there, and that those aren't permanent, but they're kind of a visual? Is that, is that why we're doing stakes there?
Two parts. You want to go? Go ahead.
That's correct. So on the, on the north side of the, northeast corner of the intersection, we're putting in LA, so the property owner has an idea of where the future right of way is going to be. And then, and then we will continue the right of way exposition negotiations from there.
And if we do acquire it, will we have to then resurvey it and have permanent pins put in? Or can those, those stakes be saved somehow? Or?
Stakes would not be a permanent solution. The pins would be set after, probably as part of a condition of a purchase and sale.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? May would someone like to make a motion?
A motion that we approve the consent calendar, 2A through 2P, as stated.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? Maybe we'll get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yep.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to visitor public comment period. Abby, do we have any, anybody to fill out a card?
Nothing has been turned in.
Okay, is anybody in the audience here to provide comment tonight? Okay, no answer. We'll move on to item 4A, which is an action item. It's a public hearing to hear comments regarding the future sale of publicly owned land off Dakota Street and to deliberate a decision on setting a date for public auction. For the public, a public hearing is required before a council may move to sell at public auction the five acre parcel of land off Dakota Street. So now we'll roll into the public hearing procedures. Staff is going to present. Public comment will be allowed directed to council. We'll then close the public hearing, council will deliberate, and then make a decision or provide direction to staff.
Sorry, still open on my computer. All right. So as Mayor just introduced, this is a public hearing as required by Idaho Code to consider public comments relating to the sale of the 4.85 plus or minus acres of land that's publicly owned off Dakota Street. So for the visual learner here, you'll see the aerial imagery showing the five acre piece-ish. It's in a light industrial park there off of Dakota. This is just the ground view from Google Earth, and the black lines on there, I just forgot to turn the road layered off, so those are roads as you were, if you were looking down on it. So that was looking to the northeast. This is looking to the northwest. Idaho Code, the two sections that we're working under 1450-1402 and 3 require that the clerk publish a summary of the action taken by council in the official newspaper. We did that. I think the date was April 29th. I didn't confirm that with the clerk, but it was in excess of the 14 day minimum requirement. And then the, if council after the public hearing decides to move forward with listing the property for sale, you would do so at a public auction. And that's the key component is it has to be auctioned to the highest bidder. So what's been done so far and what are staff's recommendations? Council at their April 8th meeting set the minimum bid pursuant to what the appraisal came in at, which was $7 a square foot. And as again, as mentioned, we have to proceed with an auction. Staff's recommending that we look at the June 17th date for that to happen, and we would need to, you know, I guess deliberate on whether or not you'd want that to be a live auction or a sealed bid. Believe in the past, we've done sealed bid, so. Internally, we've had conversations about how we want to market the property. These are just some of the areas of discussion that internally we've looked at doing, and of course, we'll take any other suggestions that you might have. There has been some internal conversation about whether we want to hire a real estate agent to do some of that marketing, and you can certainly have a conversation about that as well, council. So choose us. So at this time, I turn it back over to the mayor, and you can have your public hearing.
Do we, can we ask you a quick question?
Oh, sure.
Will, will this, if the city elects to market the sale of the property itself, will it go on any MLS listings?
If you market it only with a real estate agent, it would do so. The challenge, the counter challenge to that is, is that most real estate agents, when working on the MLS, expect to bring a buyer to that, the party to make an offer. We can't take offers, we have to auction it. So that's the difference. And so the, whether or not the value out there would get noticed by the region, the challenge then becomes would a real estate agent bring seller to the property to make a bid if they don't, don't make a commission off that, so.
So if I heard you correctly, the only way the property goes on the MLS is if we hire a Realtor?
Correct.
Thank you.
Because it is the functionality of the local real estate association that hosts that.
Okay.
Quick question. Thank you, Lisa. Can you go back to your GIS map that shows, okay, the, the property to the west? Who owns that? I think it's Coort Lane or Post Falls Garbage Service or Coort Lane.
I didn't do that research, so I don't know. I'll look to the staff if they happen to know, otherwise it would take me a moment to.
I believe that, and maybe it's recycling, and I think it is Coort Lane Recycling.
Right, but it's the Damiano, Hal Damiano's son, Phil owns, owns that, I know. No? Pardon?
They sold it.
Oh, they sold it. Well, the point is that whoever owns that, I think that we need to contact them and let them be aware because they may, they may want to expand.
But again, the only way that we can sell it to them is if they're the highest bidder.
Well, that's, that's okay, but you were looking for other options and how to market. I'm just saying, let them know that there's an auction, is my point.
Okay, any other questions for Lisa?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
Just for context, and for anybody who, this is the first time hearing about this, do you just want to give like a one paragraph background on why we're selling this?
Sure. So the city is considering selling property to receive the value of the land in order to obtain the money to purchase what we have as a contingent offer by the county to purchase the new location of the city's public works facility, to both purchase the existing property that it's on, which is, I believe, less than over three acres, and then the additional almost five acres to the south. So we're looking to raise the capital to offset the cost of that. The initial purchase of the land was intended for the city in 2015 to move the public works facility to that property, but since we now have moved into the former Lakes Highway Facility that was used to manage their road department, street department, it is a comparable use, and the buildings already came with the property, so. And the city has already purchased those structures from Lakes Highway District.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll wait here in case there's any more.
I guess I'll just add, not just to let the surrounding owners of property nearby, just let them know there's going to be an auction, because you just don't know if they're expanding or they want to invest or whatever.
I certainly believe that we'll probably do some acknowledgement on the property itself of the public auction date. I would just need council to tell us if you agree to that date, so we know, or if we want to look further out. But that's the soonest I would recommend doing it, and it's probably a pretty tight window.
Okay. All right, so now we move on to public comments. Is anyone in the audience here to testify on behalf of this hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody that is, so we'll close the public hearing and move on to council deliberations. Council can choose to proceed with deliberations or schedule deliberations to a later date to allow time to review the record. Would council, is council ready to deliberate and make a decision? Yes. Okay, hearing yes. So take it away, deliberate.
I think it's a great idea. Let's go forth.
Second.
That was an emotion.
I agree with your sentiment.
Thomas, Andy, anything to add?
I think it's a good idea, and I like the, the extra property we're buying, same size of the property we're selling. So it's like, when we first bought that property on Dakota, we had some insight what was going to happen.
And just so, for the record, it's actually about two acres bigger than the piece we're going to. So, or that we're on.
Any good, Tom?
No, let's do it.
It's zoned light industrial, so what can go on it?
Oh, lots of stuff. No, really, there's a whole chart of that.
Right.
Yeah.
You want me to put the chart up?
Yes, please.
Like any non-residential, basically.
While she's doing that, council, in your motion, you'll want to articulate is June 17th an appropriate date for an auction? Do you want it sealed bid or live? And do you want to enlist the services of a real estate agent? So you kind of have three decision points here.
So while we're discussing that, does anybody on council see the need to pay a real estate agent?
Does it get us any better exposure that could possibly jack up the bid offer?
If you don't get a bid that is equal to your appraisal or higher, you don't have to accept any of the bids, and you could decide at that point if you wanted to go back and use a real estate agent.
I might save, so I just click on it. I don't know where it's at on the website. Well, it's good for the public.
It might give you more exposure, but you're not at risk if you get a bid that's in excess of your appraisal.
If we have to, I guess, my follow-on question is, if we have to redo, then are we missing a critical time window where we want to get that thing sold?
The, the time window that the Board of County Commissioners would like to complete the sale at is before the end of this fiscal year. So ideally, that's when we would close, and we'll probably need some time to close ours and then to close that piece.
It's in October?
Yeah.
Before October 1st.
Before October 1st.
So if we have to go through it a second time? We have time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Donna. So LI is the correct, Sony?
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
So A being allowed?
Mm-hmm.
C being conditionally permitted?
Correct. And blanks being not allowed.
So I'm going to guess that when we get to the more industrial uses, you'll see more As, but you'll see that really the only one that looks to be, appear to be not allowed would be residential uses. Utilities, okay. It's a long list.
Yeah, it's, like, just goes a lot in.
I know, I'm just making sure you guys, if I'm going too fast, you can tell me. Is there a particular use you're interested in?
No, I was just, I was just curious about what the uses were, so.
Well, she's scrolling. I want to really thank Lisa and others that put this deal together. It's such a good deal for the city. You know, we've already paid for the buildings on the property, so that's already done. And so by buying the property rather than leasing, which is one of the possibilities that could have happened, owning the property is a much better deal in the long run. So I just appreciate this project and success of it, so thank you.
Okay. Is council ready to make a motion?
Sure. Okay. Take a shot at it. We have a suggestive motion in the thing here?
Yeah, I don't know that I have all three.
I would motion that we approve the date of June 17th, that's the date of public auction, and that it be sealed bid, and that we not enlist a real estate agent. I hit them all?
You did it.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconds.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
All right, we are going to move on to new business. Our first item of new business is not an action item, and it follows up on our conversation last year when I asked for council's approval to seek potential concepts to improve safety along Honeysuckle Avenue in the vicinity of Honeysuckle Beach. Tonight, we'll hear from Hayden Lake Marina, whom I've been speaking with about potential solutions, as they communicate some ideas to improve our city's summertime parking issue. And with that, we have Lindsay and Luke.
Good evening. Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Luke Radlinsky. I'm the president and chief operating officer of Southern Marinas, which is the ownership group that has proudly owned and operated Hayden Lake Marina since September of 2021. With me to my right is Lindsay Olmstead, the general manager of Hayden Lake Marina and a longtime resident of the local community. We're here tonight, as the mayor notes, to discuss some ideas to potentially address the parking and traffic issues afflicting Honeysuckle Beach and boat launch in the summer months. Lindsay?
Yeah, hi. I, I have been using and frequenting Honeysuckle Beach since I was a child. I have lived here for over 30 years, so going way back in my memory there. We have reviewed pretty extensively your May 2022 report, and we know that you're aware of the issues facing this area, particularly parking concerns, traffic concerns, safety, lack of pedestrian access, congestion. Like I said, having lived here for 30 years, it's an ongoing problem that hasn't gotten any better, especially with the growth in our community. As many of you are new into the Hayden area in the last 10 or so years, you, you also have seen that this community has grown pretty extensively. The impact of residents living on or near Honeysuckle Avenue continues to be a concern in addition to blocking access to local businesses, Hayden Lake Marina, and Peterson Place Assisted Living, as well as local utilities which are on Honeysuckle Avenue. And of course, our main, our big concern is emergency access in the event of something devastating to happen. So we'd really like to discuss more with you. Luke?
So council may be aware that Hayden Lake Marina owns two acres that neighbors the City of Hayden parcel that's referred to in the May 2022 study as the sand pit. Sand pits noted here, the five acres with the yellow star and the blue star is the Hayden Lake parcel, which we just referred to as Honeysuckle. You note where Honeysuckle Beach and Recreation Area is, which I believe is about six tenths of a mile down Honeysuckle Avenue. So we've had these cursory conversations with the city about potentially co-developing these parcels, the idea of co-developing these parcels, to substantially expand the parking for boat trailers and cars, and wanted to preview this concept. As we preview this concept, we'll note that the May 2022 study, this, this, this concept is substantially similar to one of the four potential solutions that was, that was considered at, at the time. So with that, we've done this initial design that incorporates the entire sort of aggregate seven acres. And the goal here was to design, of the design was to utilize existing public road access to both parcels, to create the appropriate traffic flow, and to work within existing footprints of the combined lots, hopefully to minimize land disturbance. So again, this is just a very high level concept, but this concept creates an additional 52 truck and trailer spots, as well as 36 car parks. And generally, that's where you see laid out with the, with the striping. The idea would be to, to enter from East Honeysuckle Avenue with pull-in parking and then pull out onto East Smith Road for anyone who would be leaving the property. That's really the extent of what we've done so far on the concept, and I'm sure that this idea creates a lot more questions than, than it answers. But this is, you know, why we wanted to come and, and discuss it with the council tonight, get initial sort of feedback or thoughts. And, you know, we come here with, with the idea that, that we'd love to work with the city to try and address this, this longstanding access problem to what is a beautiful public beach and, and lake. So happy to open it up for questions and discussion.
Okay, questions?
What happens to the existing parking along Honeysuckle?
That, that would be up to the city council, right?
So this could conceivably include additional parking to all the parking along Honeysuckle?
I think the idea.
Ma'am, my, my idea is to not have people have to park on the side of the road, but again, that's a detail that's way down the road.
Right, and I understand it, but I know that's a safety issue, and I, I agree with that, but can we eliminate parking along Honeysuckle? Because we don't have control of that parking, and I'm understanding the county owns that right of way. Because the, the issues come up before and about trying to control that parking, and I was told we can't because the county owns the right of way.
I think those are questions worth exploring.
Yeah, we could certainly look that up.
I'll definitely take notes about your questions.
Now, we can look that up. But again, the, the impetus behind this, and Luke did say the city, but I'm going to take ownership of this, so you can, anybody can throw me under the bus. I'm the one that's been working with them to figure out a solution for the state.
I, I use the, the ramp early in the year, and then it gets crazy. Literally crazy. I had one guy, I was coming in with my boat, bear with me on the story, because it kind of gives a good example what happens a lot. And you're looking at the boats that are on the, the two docks, and you're trying to figure out who's going out and who's going in, because that will determine your lineup. And I just happened to pick what I thought the people were going to go out, out on the lake, and they were going to pull their boat onto their trailer, and I pulled it, I have a smaller boat, I pulled in front of it with my drift boat. The guy comes out with his truck, and he goes, hey, why'd you cut in front of me? I said, I didn't know. It looked like you were going to go out on the lake. And he was so mad, he said, while I was walking up to get my truck, he was going to cut my boat loose from the dock and push it out, and then he's starting to threaten me. So that's the kind of stuff that can happen because there's a management problem down at that dock. Now, and so when you put this in relationship, and this is kind of where I'm concerned about, is there's a, it's six tenths of a mile from that property down to where people will have to walk. And I've walked not, probably half a mile. It takes me a while. I'm not the fastest guy anymore. And so now you have your boat sitting there while you're walking, and that then creates a problem with people coming, and it, it makes it a longer lag time before you can get your boat out. And so you're backing people up. So that's, that's, that's a problem that has to be solved because, I mean, I know that there's been discussion about a shuttle going back and forth, like who's going to do that? And, and, and are you going to be down there? This time of year, people start, the fishermen, the Kocany fishermen get down there at 8:30, 6 o'clock, and they want to be off the lake by nine because it gets so crazy. So then you've got, somebody's going to have to be there pretty early in the morning, and then, you know, late at night, are they going to be there at dusk when people come off the, the lake? So there's that shuttle concern. Again, that ties into the delay coming off from the dock and then putting your boat onto your trailer. So it's a, it's a logistical problem. I agree, I would love that we could get the traffic off of Honeysuckle.
Man, there's, there's a lot of dominoes that will fall if council's open to this, and this is a direction that we pursue. So all the things that you're saying are good, but they're the, they're the cart, and we got to get the horse out first, and if the horse is dead on arrival, then the rest of those details don't matter. But you're absolutely right. Sandy?
Yeah, thank you very much. That's beautiful rendering there. Can you tell me more about the green area? Is that going to be a park?
Well, that's the, that's currently the city's property. And that is, there's some topography there. I think there's probably a rise from, if you look at the, the, the parking lot as it's, it's conceptualized here, if you went out and kind of looked at the existing conditions, it's generally a gravel, generally flat lot. It begins to rise approximately where we've kind of scoped out some of those trees, and it's just undisturbed earth right now.
Okay.
As it relates to any of that concept, we're certainly open to discuss it. We, we certainly think that if there was a comprehensive development here, that beauty- that beautifying this area would be, I think, something that all the, not only the council, we as your neighbors and, you know, the local general public would appreciate, right? Hence, the idea of putting some landscape buffer in, perhaps some, you know, new split ground fencing. I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I think there's an opportunity here certainly to beautify these two parcels.
Okay, and then also, the property on the right, so it's the right of that blue line there? That's your property?
That's generally the lines, that's correct.
Okay, and then would you retain the ownership of that property?
We intend to, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Tom?
I don't really have any questions.
Okay.
That kind of, I thought I heard at the very beginning, a co-development idea, was that the term you used?
I did.
And it really looks like most of the development is on the city's property at this current time as far as the parking goes. And I see a few spaces on to your current property and the like. Do you have any idea of the, that's what I'm looking for, the financial co-development arrangement? If you want to, you know, early suggestion?
Great question.
What you had in mind?
My best answer would be not yet. I think that if this concept is interesting, we'd absolutely be willing to put pen to paper and start discussions as to what the costs would look like. You know, this concept, as it's presented today, shows the demolition of two of our buildings. And so as it relates to the financial arrangement, unfortunately, certainly not prepared to talk about that in detail today. You know, the thrust of our appearance today really is just to sort of preview an idea with the council. And if this is of interest, we're ready to kind of dive in.
Thank you.
Okay, does the council have any feedback? Is this something that could be explored? And we realize there are details, it's all in the details. But again, we just want to make sure that this has some kind of life in it before we take any action.
Would this be paid parking?
Again, that's a domino that's way down the line, right? In fact, when I've talked, really the need here is for the city to have relief in the summer. So this isn't even a facility I think we'd operate year-round. It'd just be something that we did in the summer. But again, those are all details.
Question for Alan. We've had this discussion before because I've thought about that sand pit, gravel pit, and could we use it for something else? And Alan said, "Look, we need that. We use that currently." Now that we're going to be moving into our, we've moved into our new facility, we potentially own more land next to the, will own land next to the new facility, Public Works Facility. Is there still going to be a need for the gravel pit?
I don't know that I can definitively answer that. I think there's an opportunity for value here. There's also an opportunity to be able to, if we purchased additional land next to our facility, that there's an opportunity just to use that. Having something on this side of town is a plus, but it's not a necessity. How's that?
But we are currently using the gravel pit.
Today, we are, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Mr. Mayor, since this is just a cool idea concept at this point, I'll just raise these issues because they would matter to me later on down the road, which is how to get people from these parking spots to the beach, whether or not the parking is free or paid. And then how is the cost of development borne? So I've just, that would, to me, would, I mean, yeah, let's go for it. But whether or not I agree ultimately to do this depends on how those questions are answered.
Okay, super. Thank you. Lindsey, Luke, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
You can just leave it. I don't know why I shut, sir.
We'll move on to 5B. Our next item asks council to approve a contract to provide the city with a recommendation as it relates to deviations with a planned unit development. I think, Donna, are you going to provide more details?
I reached out to Lisa. Hayden Canyon Plan Unit Development started many, many years ago. It's had amendments to its final conditions of approval. It's had subsequent owner changes, staff changes here. I'm trying to figure out a kind of a guiding rod that staff can use, as well as future owners within Hayden Canyon can use, as a, to keep consistent. I mean, really, it's a consistency checkpoint kind of thing.
All the travel knowledge is in the laws, right?
Well, it's, you know, not necessarily. But it's hard to hold everybody to the same accountable standard when everybody keeps moving around. So I mean, that's part of it. And the way that the, the way that the final agreements and the decisions were approved, it left a little bit too much flexibility. I think flexibility is good sometimes, but sometimes it's not so good. And so that consistency piece is what we're looking for from Jacob. So they're going to review, if you should approve this contract as written, they're going to go through all of the approvals and where they stand today, and then give us kind of a tech memo that will enable us to look at proposals as they come in at the subdivision phase of the PUD and make sure that, is this a amendment? Is this a request, a minor modification? Or does it rise to the level of an amendment that needs to come back through the PUD process? And today, the way they're written, I mean, I finally said, "Okay, Lisa, take a look at this." As a planner, Lisa, take a look at this. What do you think? And then, you know, we're all kind of like, we all, Rob's looked at part of these, Alan's looked at part of these. All of us come up with different answers.
This is objective.
So this is an objective, not a subjective view at these decisions to give us all guidance on that question.
And Donna, just for clarity for the public and to correct me if I'm mistaken, we've identified this issue, and we have now established processes where this issue will not come forward with the newer developments. This is just something we've inherited specific to Hayden Canyon, correct?
We really tried, yes, to reduce this issue.
So staff has recognized the issue. We've got compensating controls for it now, but we have kind of the old milk that's been spilled.
I guess the difference that, just if I might add, the difference with Hayden Canyon is it came in and allows for multiple developers, multiple owners and multiple developers within a single PUD. Generally, in today's code, under Idaho statutes and city codes, doesn't allow for that. So you don't get that moving target where you're trying to keep all of the team developers in the same line.
Yeah, well, a couple of things here when we get to deliberation. But can you give us kind of a timeline here? Hayden Canyon, I think, has been going on, it seems like, forever. It was probably initially introduced or proposed in 20-plus years ago?
2007.
Was it 2007?
2007, 2008, something like that.
And it was approved roughly? 2012.
Yeah, and then it had an amendment that came later.
Right, and then it had an amendment in like 2015, 2016.
2015.
So that amended the annexation agreement, master development agreements, both the PUD and the first subdivision.
So it sounds like over the last 18 years, and if I was hearing you correctly, you know, it's been sold, multiple owners, and it's just such a mishmash.
And we've had several staff changes in both engineers and community development directors and/or planners in that lifetime as well.
Right, okay. I'll wait till deliberation or discussion, I guess, for the rest of it.
Tom, did you have something?
Once they do the study, is it then council's prerogative to accept the results, or is that something?
I'll jump in on this. So the deliverable would be a technical memo about the recommendations for when certain triggers would occur that would cause the application to go back to the decision, the body that made the ultimate decision, whether it's P&amp;Z or council dependent upon the ask. So if you were going to have to accept them or not accept them, that would be, to me, questionable about the intent of where we're going. The answer of this is really that we need direction so that we can bring you guys answers. We wouldn't necessarily...
It's an analysis, it's a planner analysis of your existing document structure, right?
Okay.
That's what it is.
I think you answered a different question than I asked, but ultimately...
And it's objective for the purpose of, here are the decisions, here were the deliberations by council, here were the decisions that they made, here are the documents that were a result of that, with zero subjective input from people who may have been here or might have a memory or have heard rumors about how something came about. It is truly an objective, an objective analysis of what are their entitlements right now? And at what point do those entitlements, if there's a requested change, trigger a necessity to come back to council for reconsideration or a different approval?
Okay. In the memo that you gave us, only 37 hours total is proposed. Do you guys think that's enough to get our heads around this thing?
Well, initially, the response was that they wanted to do it much more thorough, but it came out of a very costly end result, that we weren't comfortable taking on that level of cost. So we asked them to drill it down and get a little bit more, give us advice on the technical side of things rather than a full report on it.
So are you comfortable with this amount of hours that you'll get a product that's worth using?
We're comfortable, yes. And if at the end of that, we need to come back to you guys for more time, then we'll assess that at that time. But for now, we don't want to invest the kind of money that they're asking for to produce the report that they wanted to do. So we scaled it back some.
Okay, thank you. Sandy?
Yes, does this kind of thing, a third-party review, happen often? Do they have expertise in this?
The gentleman that's doing this, Darren Fluke, is a very experienced planner out of southern Idaho that I've worked with before. Lisa actually had contacted him and discussed this contract before I knew that she had contacted him and I'd worked with him with other cities. Yes, this is, this is unique. This isn't something you've probably ever seen before and may not see again. It's unique to a complicated project like this that needs a real technical review at this point, really to give your staff, as Donna indicated, a measuring stick, really, that can be used equally across all these developers in making these determinations as to what triggers a need to come back to council.
Yeah, it sounds like a unique niche for him to...
It's not, it's rareer, but I mean, I performed these same duties. I practiced land use planning. I showed a desire to want to even do this one, but I have to stay kind of in my lane over here, so.
And I've taken a run at this one also. I'm not a planner, but we all decided that that objective lens, just holistically looking this, was the best way to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more, if I may. So as a third-party reviewing and saying, "This is how I see it," could still lead to a legal dispute.
Could, yes.
So this could be, there could be additional costs, but this is kind of our first offense, if you will.
Yeah, it's really protecting the city and the staff members from having to make calls along the way without the measuring stick as to what degree of is major or minor changes to the plan that results in going back either to the decision body or administratively done.
It really does give staff a lot of ammunition when they now, after this review, assuming we get these trigger points, and they say to a developer, "This is a major change that's going to require an amendment to the PUD at council. And oh, by the way, we had an expert review this, and this is their analysis." So it's not just staff saying it. There's an expert review that's been done. And so if you can get that deliverable for this cost, it's well worth it.
So am I hearing correctly that this has actually no legally binding effect?
It's just evidentiary ammunition.
And that could be used, should it go to court? It would probably stand as an expert witness.
Just expert work.
That thing, yeah.
Just like a traffic impact study or anything along those lines.
Okay.
And we can't ask the developer to pay for this?
I don't, we explored that option internally, but in the end, it's ultimately the decision that the city is going to take based on the recommendations that they make. So I would feel more comfortable and defensively as being able to manage the recommendations forward with us taking the leadership on it.
And that way, we retain it as our expert work product.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion. Or do you need to deliberate this?
Maybe some discussion here.
Okay.
And some comments. As I read the memo, you know, there seem to be some questions to, you know, what's the deal here? And for the public, it basically says, "The recommended action or motion is related to establish the original purpose, intent, form, function, public benefit, and developer obligations of the PUD consistent with the expectations of the public and elected officials throughout the approval process." And again, we're talking an 18-year period here of all of those original purpose and the intent. And the people, elected officials, and whatever have obviously gone through significant changes. And the impact of authorizing, let's see, "Provide guidance to the city as to what shall be considered a major or minor amendment to the planned unit development and provide guidance related to required process as the type of amendment may be determined." The functional impact of not authorizing would be that inequity may occur to either developers within the PUD or to the city due to unclear or ambiguous interpretation of PUD and associated documents. So again, even though it has no legally binding effect on it, I think it's probably a good idea to approve this. I see we have funding out of the Contract Planning Services and Special Project Engineering. So the funding is there. It's already budgeted in there.
We budget for this iteratively, you know, if it comes up in every budget year, should we need it for exactly this reason.
We're not having to go pull from somewhere or look for funding that's basically in those two accounts. Okay, so I would...
Except we're going to have to sell your chair, Ed. Sorry.
You can, it's kind of, it doesn't go back. It kind of has a glitch in it, so anyways.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I'll make the motion that we authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Jacobs for Hayden Canyon PUD review and recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion on the motion is made? And maybe we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DePree?
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We're off to our last item of new business, which is to ask council to approve the selected vendor for the 2025 Honeysuckle Beach concessions contract. Any questions or discussion on this item?
I have a question. Is this contract for this year only?
Correct, correct. They requested it for two years, but we only made it for this year.
Okay.
All right, make a motion, it looks like.
Oh, okay, here, I would move that we authorize to approve the 2025 Honeysuckle Beach concession agreement with locals for concession sales at Honeysuckle Beach for the summer season.
Second. Okay, we have motion second, is there any discussion on the motion being made? And maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePries?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to reports. First, the city administrator report and calendar review.
I believe you guys got calendars for review for May and June, so just wanted to bring you up to speed on a request by Olivia Metz with the Metz Group, who has been hired by CityLink to do some route analysis and bus stop analysis, and she's interested in finding out if any council members or all of you would be interested in going on a tour of our route and our bus route as we go through that analysis. So I'm reaching out to you guys to find out if that's of interest, if so, we can get that scheduled. I think, given that public transportation has taken a special interest locally here, I think it would be good for the council to see what public transportation is doing within our community and how our routes are serving our citizens.
I'd be interested.
Other than that, I, unless council has any questions about the work we're doing, we're just busy every day.
I have a question about May 14th, there's nothing there, but do we have a meeting on May 14th?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Oh, we have the--
Redline meetings.
Yeah, redline review, so I didn't make it on the calendar.
And that's at 5:30?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then on the 15th, is there something, I guess that's Arbor Day, so that's not calendar worthy, I guess.
If you want to go to the ARBS meeting, we're always welcome.
It's a little tight in there.
Nice to have visitors.
They won't let me in.
And that's at 3 o'clock on Thursday, if you want to come. It's exciting. Can be.
Okay, the only thing I think I'll add to that is, our city had a wonderful kite festival this past weekend, and so thank you, Lisa, to the staff, it was a great time, and it was nice to see Hayden families out there enjoying where they live, it's very nice. We don't have any law enforcement report tonight, do we? All right, fair enough. Are there any--
Not me.
That's good, we're glad you're here.
What's happening out there?
She's not there, or in general?
In general.
Business as usual?
Business as usual, yeah. There's one company on right now.
Fair enough. Does any council member have a report to make from external boards or things like that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I already told you this, but for the benefit of the rest of the council, I met with Representative from IDWR when I was attending the aquifer protection board meeting last week, and I'm trying to work with him to get him to come in and present to us on water quantity for the aquifer, but the date for that is TBD.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for continuing to run that down, I appreciate it. Moving on to number seven, does any council member have a request for future agenda items? I'm hearing none, so we're now going to transition into a workshop with council to discuss their transparency and local government expectations.